Good evening. My name is Lesla Cullum and along with Charlotte Malloy, I am co-president of the League of Women Voters of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. It's my pleasure to welcome you tonight to this public forum for candidates for the Murfreesboro City School Board and the Murfreesboro City Council. Before we begin, I would like to thank the Murfreesboro City Television Department for their cosponsorship of this event. In particular, I would like to thank the staff of Government Access City TV and Alan Bosman, the City Television Coordinator. I would also like to thank Judy Powell of the League for organizing this event and coordinating with City TV to make it available to the viewing audience. We are also pleased this evening to collaborate with Mary Evans from the Middle Tennessee State University American Democracy Project in the presentation of these forums. The goal of the American Democracy Project is to produce college graduates who understand all levels of government and are committed to engaging in meaningful actions as citizens in a democracy. By working with students and faculty, the American Democracy Project seeks to nurture programs inside and outside the classroom that raise the levels of our campus's engagement with local, national, and global communities. Our moderator for this evening is Amy Sayward. She is a part of the American Democracy Project at MTSU and we appreciate her willingness to serve in this capacity. Please remember that the League of Women Voters wants you to understand and appreciate the power of your vote. The leaders you elect make decisions that affect you, your community, your schools, and more. So please participate in early voting or vote on Election Day, April 17th.
Good evening. I am Amy Sayward. I'm a professor of history at Middle Tennessee State University and as you saw, also part of the American Democracy Project on campus. I will serve as your moderator tonight for this forum. The forum is cosponsored by the League of Women Voters of Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, as well as the Murfreesboro Cable Commission Cable Television Department. It is my pleasure to welcome both our live audience here in, here at the Murfreesboro City Council chambers and our viewers at home tonight. Tonight, we will hear remarks from the City School Board candidates. Before introducing the candidates, I would like to outline the procedure for tonight's forum. Each candidate will be allowed to make a one-minute opening statement. When both, when all candidates have completed their opening statement, the first questions will be asked. The questions were developed by a League committee with suggestions by MTSU students and other interested citizens. The committee selected questions for inclusion. The resulting list was much more extensive than can be used tonight. As moderator, I made the final decisions on what questions will be asked for this forum. The candidates have not been told what questions will be asked. Each candidate will be given 30 seconds to answer each question and one minute will be allowed for the final question. I will begin by introducing the candidates. They are each seeking election to a seat that is important to the citizens of Murfreesboro and we hope to hear them address the substantive issues facing all of us. I want to thank them for their gracious acceptance of our invitation to participate in this event. Sitting to my far right and speaking first tonight is Jared Barrett. William Andy Brown. Butch Campbell. Aaron Hall. Brian Lewis. Nancy Phillips. And Doreen Watson. We will begin with the one-minute opening statements. Mr. Barrett, will you please begin?
Hello, my name's Jared Barrett and I'm running for the Murfreesboro City School Board. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the Murfreesboro Television Channel for hosting this forum tonight. I'm running for three reasons: to manage the growth of our schools, to continue to invest in our children's education, and to be a voice for the educators on the school board. As a product of a public education with a mother with over 20-plus years of teaching experience and as a former substitute teacher, I know what the teachers and students need on a daily basis. I promise to work hard and listen to all stakeholders who have a say with the school board and make informed decisions. I ask for your vote so I can be a voice for the students and the educators and parents on the Murfreesboro School Board. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Good evening. I'm Andy Brown. I grew up in Murfreesboro. My wife Karen and I have been married for approximately 40 years. We have three children and have been blessed with five grandchildren. So I'm representing three generations of students in the Murfreesboro City Schools. I was a pediatrician in this community for many years. After retiring as a pediatrician, I've worked as the Vice President for Medical Affairs at Middle Tennessee Medical Center and served there as the Chief Medical Officer now. I consider myself an advocate for all children. I believe that the education of children represents the future of our city, our state, and our nation.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you. And I too would like to thank the League of Women Voters and those responsible for the forum tonight and having it so we can meet and talk about issues in education. I'm a lifelong resident of Murfreesboro, went through Murfreesboro City Schools, graduated from Central High School in 1963, and then went and graduated from Middle Tennessee State University. I have a master's degree plus 45 hours. I am married to the former Janie Abernathy, who was Secretary at Bellwood and also at Reeves-Rodgers Discovery School. I have a son Rich, who teaches kindergarten at Erma Siegel. And my youngest son Chris is, works for YouthCAN, helping young people do better in their lifelong activities that they pursue. I would have served on the City School Board for the past four years. It has been a tremendously enjoyable activity and I would like to have your support and like to serve another four. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Hello. My name is Aaron Hall and I would like to thank the League of Women Voters and Murfreesboro City TV and everyone else who made this forum possible tonight. As an attorney, I've done a lot of work in the juvenile court and represent almost 100 young people there. And my mother Diane Hall is a fifth grade teacher at Erma Siegel and she's been teaching for almost 20 years total there in a case in Lane. And likewise, I went to the Murfreesboro City Schools as well, Reeves Rogers, back before it was Discovery School and then Case and Lane. So I really think I could bring a unique perspective to the board. I have an understanding of teachers, but you know, through my work in the court, I see a lot of issues that teachers, you know, only see the more distant effects of either in home struggles or with custody situations with children. So I'd ask for your support on Election Day, April 17th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you. Hello. My name is Brian Lewis and I'm running for the Murfreesboro City School Board. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, City TV, and my fellow candidates for making tonight happen. First, I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. I graduated from MTSU, was married, and I have three children. My oldest son Jackson attends Scales Elementary, is in the third grade there at a city school. Mother, son William, and my daughter Allison aren't quite old enough yet to attend schools, but they will be here shortly. I work as an instructional designer for a healthcare company, designing and facilitating learning for that healthcare company. I have a child in city schools. I'm an instructional designer. I feel that I have a unique quality that makes me uniquely qualified to serve on the Murfreesboro City School Board. I ask for your vote and thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips?
Hi. My name is Nancy Phillips. I'm from a small town called Portland, Tennessee. My husband Mark and I are both MTSU graduates and Murfreesboro's been home for over 20 years. We have two children. We attend Saint Mark's United Methodist Church. Both of our kids went through, completely through the city system and are now in the county system. I am a voiceover artist, which means I use my voice to entertain and educate children, especially in the program I created for City Channel 3 called Adventures in Murfreesboro with the Rabbit. For the past 12 years, I've also used my voice as a member of the city school, the City Schools Board of Education. In that, I have, I bring experience and I am a tenacious advocate for children and education because I believe that they deserve a good, strong public education. Murfreesboro City Schools is a great system with a proud heritage and a bright future that I hope to continue to be a part of. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Watson?
Hello. I'm Doreen Watson. I am a candidate for the Murfreesboro City School Board. I came to Murfreesboro in 1986 to attend Middle Tennessee State University to complete my degree in elementary education. I later went back to the same college to complete a degree, a Bachelor of Science degree in nursing. I have worked at Middle Tennessee Medical Center for about 20 years. I am married to David Watson. We have two children. What I can bring to the board is strong morals, strong work ethics. I would like to see us go forward in technology for the schools, policies to improve in the schools, and for safety for all children. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now turn to our first question. That question will be answered first by Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown, what do you see as the greatest strengths of Murfreesboro City Schools?
The greatest strength that I see of the Murfreesboro City Schools is the tradition of our schools. We have a tradition of excellence that dates back to the beginning of the city school system. I think that if we continue to expand on that tradition, that we'll be able to continue to educate our students to the best of their ability, which is the key to success.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
The strength of the Murfreesboro City School System are the teachers and those people within the building that are meeting with students each and every day. Teachers work hard, they plan, they've had undue stress this year with evaluation processes, and they have worked overboard to continue to provide educational excellence for the students in our school system. And that, I think, is noted in our test scores as they certainly rose this year.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell? I'm sorry, Mr. Hall?
Thank you. Well, I might as well say, Mr. Campbell, because my answer is the same. You know, I can't think of any greater strength that our schools have than the teachers we have and they're just the best I could possibly imagine, having grown up in the same household with one. But not just my mom, but all the teachers in the Murfreesboro City Schools are really incredible and, you know, they do a great job and they have to cope with an incredible amount of stress that I think a lot of us, you know, couldn't begin to appreciate.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Addressing that question of, you know, what's the greatest strength of the Murfreesboro City Schools? You know, first, I would have to say the students are a significant part of the strength of the city schools. And making sure that those students are able to succeed is a very tight group of administrators, principals, family members, and community leaders who are working very collaboratively to make sure that the schools have the support and resources they need so those students can succeed. I have been very happy to see that type of support from the different schools that I've seen and to know that that support is very broad-based.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips?
I think our people, all of our people, are our greatest strength in Murfreesboro City Schools. From the leadership of our terrific Director of Schools, Dr. Linda Gilbert, to the classroom teachers, the lunch ladies, the janitors, all the families, this is what makes our system so great. And I appreciate the contribution of every member of Murfreesboro City Schools.
Thank you. Ms. Watson?
I think the families and the teachers are the, are the most important in our school system. The teachers cannot do what they do without strong family support behind the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett?
I think the strengths that the Murfreesboro City School Board, or City School System has is the focus on the pre-K through sixth grade education and also the low student-teacher ratio of 20 to 1. That's pretty impressive. We need to just keep that focus and keep that strength. Thanks.
Thank you. Our second question, we'll start with Mr. Campbell. What are the greatest challenges facing public education in Tennessee?
The challenges of young people today are tremendously higher and greater than what they were years ago. I think the overall aspect of people, I think the overall condition of our, certainly our economy and the way our country is living today, our ethics, teachers and students have a large responsibility and challenge to be able to survive and do the things they need to do and learn to be citizens of goodwill later on during life.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
See, I'd say the greatest challenge that we face today is, or in public schools, would be the changing family structure in that nature. I've seen a lot of the effects of that as an attorney in the juvenile court. You know, a lot of times I have represented delinquents who, you know, may have done some very bad things, but they come, they often come from broken homes and there are problems with their parents and their families and they don't have enough of a support structure and of course, that spills over into our school system as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
You know, the wonderful thing about our school system is that we have schools that serve students throughout the community and there's a challenge in making sure that regardless of which school you attend, that we're able to provide the programs that are necessary for each of those students to succeed, whether they attend a school over here or over there. And it becomes a challenge to make sure that we're able to, as a board and as other people involved in the daily school system, to make sure that we are able to provide the support necessary to make sure that every student has an opportunity to succeed as well as step out of the way when they need us to step out of the way so they can succeed.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips?
Some of the challenges for our system, one of the biggest ones is the new evaluation system for teachers because it takes such a huge time commitment, not just for the teachers to meet all the tenants of the evaluation, but for the administrators having to perform those evaluations. Another problem that we have is making sure that with all the new standards we have in the state, that we continue to teach critical thinking skills, problem solving, and encouraging creativity because that is the future of our country.
Thank you. Ms. Watson?
I believe it's, our greatest challenges are child safety, along with the need for more technology. We also need to get the children to do more hands-on activities. They're doing a really good job at teaching the basics and what to do, but I would like to see the children being able to apply it in everyday life. There are so many field trips that we can go, they could go to or other learning that can be done.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett?
Some of the greatest challenges facing the schools, I feel, one already mentioned was evaluations, the continuing changing state regulations. We just need to keep on top of that and make sure we're following those. Also encouraging more parent involvement with the children and with their children's education, just to get them more involved and develop programs to help that. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Education is a continually changing landscape. What works today may not work tomorrow and I think that's something that we have to keep focusing on. The classroom today is a very heterogeneous classroom as opposed to some of the classrooms that we saw 30 to 40 years ago. And I think the outside factors, all of those factors that are affecting teachers today sometimes prevent them from providing the education that they want to provide.
Thank you. Our third question, which we'll start with Mr. Hall. What in your experience and background prepares you for this position?
Well, I've already mentioned, of course, grew up in the home of a teacher and, say, I grew up in the Murfreesboro City School System and not just as any student would, but you know, often staying after school with my mom and, you know, knowing several of the teachers after school. And of course, my, more recently, my experience as an attorney. I've probably worked with as many special needs kids in a year as maybe a lot of teachers have in, or the average classroom teacher might in five or 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
I feel that what most qualifies me for this position in my background is I create learning for a living. You know, every day when I go into work, I'm assessing situations to see how we can present material to people so they not just are taught material, but so they learn the material so they can actually step out into a role and perform better because of what they were taught and now have learned. And as someone who's involved with education and serving on the board, I want to focus on making sure that students just aren't taught material, but they learn it so they can apply it later in life.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips?
Well, I talked about being on the school board for 12 years and that is important because that's 12 years of continuing education classes, studying policy, studying education legislation, visiting schools. But I also have eight years as a Murfreesboro City School parent and that gives me a unique perspective because I see it from both sides. I understand the challenges families face. There might be financial stresses. There are certainly time stresses. We want, each of us wants the best education we can get for our child, whether that child, wherever that child is.
Thank you. Ms. Watson?
Hello. As a parent, I can bring forth experience for teaching my children and also I have taught in the school system before, so I can bring forth that also. I have a strong work ethic. I have a Bachelor of Science degree in elementary education, as well as Bachelor of Science degree in nursing. With my nursing degree, I have taught many families how to take care of their babies, how to take care of their illnesses. I also have respect for others and I have a strong moral background.
Thank you very much. Mr. Barrett?
I feel my experience as an archaeologist and as a member of the Rutherford County Board of Zoning Appeals, I deal with critical challenges on a daily basis with both of those titles. And also as a former substitute teacher, I know what our educators face on a daily basis in the classroom and I can bring that experience to the school board.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
I am a product of and firmly believe in public education. As a pediatrician, I spent my entire career working with the physical, emotional, and intellectual well-being of children. I am not trained as an educator, but I have eight teachers in my immediate family. And over the last 10 years, my business has allowed me to deal in multimillion-dollar ventures, making tough decisions.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Because I had the experience of being a part of the public school system for a little over 40 years and working with teachers, parents, students, knowing about the educational needs, knowing about the educational expectations, and being there and have done that, I feel is a major thing on how I can help to improve and make better and solve whatever problems we might have because I've been there and done it.
Thank you. Our fourth question, we'll start with Mr. Lewis. If elected or re-elected, what would you like to accomplish during your term in office?
If elected to this office, the one thing I'd like to see accomplished during my term is increased parental involvement in the schools and as well as increased support from the local community. When we look at schools and we see those that are doing very well, regardless of what makes that school, that school, we see that parental involvement, family involvement, and local community support is very key to that success. So one of the things I would like to see accomplished is increased family support and community support in each of our schools.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips?
I'm so proud that our system grew by over 20% in the last year as far as academic achievement is concerned. We were sixth in the state. I'd like to see that amazing growth continue. I'd like to see our, I'd like to be a part of working to, to make sure that our schools are more engaged in the community and that we are a vital part of what goes on in Murfreesboro City. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Watson?
On the WGS newsletter that I got, there was 44% of Rutherford County adults can read at or below a third grade level. We need to help our children that are out there in the Murfreesboro school system. These children are going home to parents that aren't able to help them with their homeworks. So I'd like to see us broaden out just from the elementary, but also to the parent involvement and get them in and help them to get educated so they can help their own children.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett?
A few things I'd like to see accomplished during my first term would be greater cooperation between MTSU and the city school system. It's, they're doing a good job right now, but just keep that up. Also keep our student-teacher ratio low and more parent involvement. And I know that's a tough one to do sometimes, but maybe we can develop some programs and get the parents to become more involved in their children's education. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
I think we need to be sure that all students in every school have an equal opportunity to perform at their maximum ability. I think we need to focus on technology because technology is a key for future success for all students. And I really think that we need to be sure that we're mitigating the outside factors that influence the classroom as much as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
I would like to see our students continue to grow. I think their test scores have improved a lot this year. I would like to see our teachers become even more aware of what's going on in regards to technology and for us to be able to provide for them the technological help that we will need to do so in order to bring our students further up the ladder as they go down through the grade levels.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
It's, well, something that I found kind of disheartening while running for the school board is that oftentimes I hear people in the community say, "Well, I don't have any kids in the system. I don't know anyone who works in the system, so I don't have a stake in it." So I'd really like to, like to see happens, you know, show Murfreesboro that, you know, this is our future and that even if you don't have a personal connection to the schools, you do have a stake in the school system. And just, you know, I'd like to just see a lot more community involvement with the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Our fifth question, we'll start with Ms. Phillips. What opportunities are there? I think we started here last time. So Ms. Phillips, we'll start with our fifth question. What opportunities are there, or should there be, in the school system to promote and support healthy lifestyles for our children?
Oh my goodness, we have so many things going on. We have, we have this terrific program called Healthy Schools where there, we have nurses in the schools, we have activities going on. Children are learning about healthy eating, staying healthy, and making that a part of their everyday lifestyle, monitoring themselves and their own health, and then taking that and sharing that with their family. It's something we're very proud of and we work very hard on and we did this by pursuing grants and I'm very proud of that. Our, our system.
Thank you. Ms. Watson?
Our opportunities for children, I would like to see more parent involvement in the school system being open. I really dislike that the schools close at a certain time and it's just a closed building. We should have that open to a lot of parents and always have some kind of activity going on in there that the parent and the child can do together, whether it's pottery or karate classes or zumba or something, but have that open so that everyone can come and participate and learn a healthy lifestyle.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett?
I feel we could develop programs for students and families to develop those healthy lifestyles we were just talking about and also promote healthy foods in the cafeteria in schools and just encourage our children to, you know, eat better and to do exercise and to develop programs in that nature. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Tennessee ranks 39th out of the 50 states and states in the overall health of our citizens. We rank 42nd out of 50 states in the number of our citizens who are obese and we rank 46th out of 50 in the number of our citizens who have diabetes. The educational opportunities are great. There are many, there are so many things that we can do with our students to teach them the things that will help them avoid those health problems in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
We currently have our, the Hope Clinic in our bus that goes from school to school that provides healthy information for, not only for students, but also for parents. We have programs within the schools already promoting good, healthy lifestyles and I would like to see those continue and to perhaps increase, helping to increase the knowledge for parents in particular, so they can help their children have a better, healthy lifestyle.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
So a great thread I've seen to our children recently is the rise of synthetic drugs. Now while law enforcement is doing a great job in getting those off the street, I think, you know, it's, you know, vital that we have education programs. you know, it's, you know, vital that we have education programs in effect in our schools to teach children and parents, well, older children probably, you know, about the dangers of synthetic drugs, and so that we can avoid them getting involved in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
One of the things that really struck me as I was wanting to learn more about the role of a city school board member, is someone mentioned to me that it's hard for a student to learn, if that student has a toothache. Can't really sit in the classroom if they've got pain in trying to study. We've, we've let our children down in our schools if we can't provide the support necessary, when that support is actually available, to provide that support for those children. We have wonderful programs in place now that actually come in and offer support in those areas of dental health, and I think what we need to do is focus on communicating the benefits of that service to our community as a whole.
Thank you. Our sixth question, we'll begin with Mrs. Watson. What is your vision for Murfreesboro City Schools, and how can you help achieve that vision?
My vision for Murfreesboro City School System is for the school to be open and to the public, and willing to have the parents come in and to work together. They, like I said, have zumba classes, have pottery, have different things in the evening so that it can bring the family together. We are a community, but yet we don't act like one. We're kind of separate in our own individual schools, so we need to kind of bring everybody together, because we're all about higher education and a strong education. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett?
My vision for the Murfreesboro City Schools is support for our educators. We need to give them the tools that they need to teach in the classroom effectively, including technology. Also, again, parent involvement, can't stress that enough, just trying to get our parents involved, develop programs for that, and to help them become involved.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
My vision is for each student in the school system to be able to perform at their maximum ability. I would like to have a system where the teachers feel valued and respected. And really, the simple answer is, I want the Murfreesboro City Schools to be the number one school system in the state.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
My vision for Murfreesboro City Schools would be to continue with the improvements that we have made over the last year and a half. Many people may not know, but our teachers were ranked very high according to the evaluation standard this year, so high, in fact, that we were questioned by the State Department of Education on why. And when we showed them our test scores, they understood. So my vision is to keep on doing what we're doing and improve as much as we have in the last year.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
My vision is just to ensure that our children are getting the best education that we can provide for them, but also, you know, maintain, or be responsible stewards of the community's finances as well. The school board does spend most of the money that the city takes in, and we can't, of course, mortgage our children's future while providing them with a great education. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Before my youngest, or oldest son actually entered the city schools, he liked to build things and create things, and I was often struck by the kinds of things he would come up with, and call me to buy loads so he could help build a time machine. He entered the city schools, and that kind of creativity has been able to grow and become more than what it ever was two or three years ago. So my vision for the city schools is to be able to foster something like that in every child. It doesn't matter where that child goes to school, or what support they may have elsewhere. They need that ability to be able to take those ideas and grow with them, and be able to pursue those dreams as they get older.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips?
My vision for Murfreesboro City Schools is a place where there are happy children, safe children, actively engaged in learning, where teachers know they are valued and supported, where parents know they're welcomed and part of the education equation, and where the city school system is a vital, living part of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our last question, just to remind our panel of one minute to answer this question, so I saved the longest question. This past year, the state legislature enacted a new teacher and principal evaluation system. The state is seeking opinions from the public about that system. What would you like the state to know? We'll start with Mr. Barrett.
Well, I'd like the state to know that a lot of teachers have, principals and teachers have concerns regarding the evaluation system. It definitely needs to be changed, and it needs some things to, like I said, things to change about that. I'd like to again thank the League of Women Voters and the Murfreesboro City Channel for hosting this forum this evening. Again, I'm running for three reasons: growth of our schools, to continue to invest in our children's education, and to be a voice for educators on the school board. You can reach me at 995-6724 if you ever have a question or comment. Feel free to call me. And I ask for your vote April 17th. My name's Jared Barrett, and I'm running for Murfreesboro City School Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
I think when you deal with a problem, you have to talk to the content experts. And I think the content experts in this situation are our teachers and our school administrators. And I think the state legislators need to involve those individuals in the evaluation process and review. I think that when you're dealing with individuals, that you have to depend on their expertise to be able to guide you in those situations. I am a candidate for Murfreesboro City School Board. I do consider myself an advocate for children, and if elected, I promise to be honest, to be fair, and to work hard for the Murfreesboro City Schools.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
The evaluation model that was passed and brought forth by the state legislature and the governor was one that was done, in my opinion, without a lot of input from teachers. As a former principal and one who evaluated teachers every year, and looking at the new system, it was very much unfair, I thought, for teachers, because of the standards that were placed for it. Not that teachers don't want to be evaluated, but because teachers are already evaluated and know what they're doing. It doesn't take something brand-new for a principal to determine whether or not a teacher does a good job or not. I support teachers. I have supported cafeteria workers, all members of the Murfreesboro City School System, and will continue to do so. Like I said earlier, I have served four years, and I have enjoyed those four years very much, and I would like to serve another four years. Therefore, I ask for your support on April 17th. My name is Butch Campbell. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Yes, all the teachers I've talked to, they don't have a problem with being evaluated and being held accountable for the job that they do. But the current evaluation system is broken. It, it distracts teachers from their job, which is teaching, and they're spent time filling out forms, worrying about they're hitting all the right benchmarks and goals, all the bullet points, and then, of course, principals who have to do, you know, an insurmountable number of evaluations on all the teachers in their schools every year. It's just an unnecessary distraction from the purpose of educating our children. So what I'd really like to see, you know, we have different city school, or school boards, county school boards, city school boards across the state for a reason, because different communities have different needs. So if the state would reform this policy to allow just the boards to determine the appropriate standards for their communities, that's what I would prefer. And I'd like to thank again the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and my name is Aaron Hall. I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you very much to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring tonight's event, the Candidates for City TV. I'm Ryan Lewis, and I would like your vote for the Murfreesboro City School Board. I can tell you, as someone who's had to create evaluations as an instructional designer, as well as someone who's had to train and be evaluated by those same evaluation standards, the importance of being evaluated, but also understanding that there needs to be a balance between the evaluation and the ability to effectively train or teach, so the people that you're actually trying to teach or train can learn and apply that information later on. So as we look at the evaluation system that's been put forth, I do have a concern that that balance isn't there. One of the things that really struck me, and I think began to be a motivating factor for why I'm running for this particular office, is how impressed my son was that his own principal would take time out of her schedule to meet with him, and has actually done that on a yearly basis. The more time we take from principals and teachers, the less time that those principals and teachers can have those kind of moments for each of their kids. And I know how important that's been for him, and I want that to be the case for any of the children that are in our city schools.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips?
First, I would want to say thank you to the government for realizing that we need help with education. However, I would like them to go back and completely redesign the evaluation system. It is burdensome, especially for our veteran teachers. And we need to get the focus back on kids, which the evaluation system does not do. I'd like to talk about, and it's hard to talk about yourself sometimes, but I'd like to talk about why I would like you to vote for me. I talked about leadership and experience. I do have experience, but that's important, because there's such a huge learning curve to good boardsmanship. With the tremendous changes in state education, and with the loss on our own board of several veteran board members, it becomes more important. I want to say thank you. I am so grateful for having had the opportunity to serve our Murfreesboro City Schools. In the school board election, you get to have up to four votes. You've got some great choices here. I respectfully ask to be one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Watson?
I think the evaluation needs to be done fairly. If you have a teacher who teaches versus one who's a PE teacher and art teacher, how do you evaluate them on the same level, on the same plane? So you can't say that one subject's better than another. So they really need to look at that and either make it more, less objective, and more just on what the teacher does themselves, and not really based on what the children do, but how the teacher actually presents the material. I would like for you to vote for me, Doreen Watson. I believe that all children, whether they are special needs children or excelling, all need to be on the same playing field. They all need the same equipment, the same special tools, the same chance to excel. And with gentle guidance from our teachers and high standards, I'm sure that everyone can excel at a high rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, Murfreesboro Cable Commission, and City TV Department, I want to thank all of the candidates for their participation tonight. I also want to recognize the staff of Governmental Channel 3 for their cooperation in presenting this program. I also want to remind all citizens to go to the polls, either during early voting, which begins on March 28th and ends April 12th, or Election Day, April 17th, to exercise this vital right to determine who will represent you. May we please close with a round of applause for all of our participants tonight.
Good evening. My name is Martha Norcunis, and I'm a professor of oral and public history at MTSU, and I will serve as moderator this evening for the forum. The forum is co-sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, the Murfreesboro Cable Commission, Cable Television Department. It's my pleasure to welcome both our audience here at Murfreesboro City Council chambers, and our viewers at home to this evening's program. Tonight, we'll hear remarks from the city council candidates. Before introducing the candidates, I'd like to outline the procedure for tonight's forum. Each candidate will be allowed one minute to make an opening statement. When all candidates have completed their opening statements, the first of several questions will be asked. The questions were developed by a league committee with suggestions by MTSU students and other interested citizens. The committee selected questions for inclusion. The question list is more extensive than can be used. As moderator, I made the final decision on what questions will be asked this evening. The candidates have not been told what questions will be asked. Each candidate will be given 30 seconds to answer each question. One minute will be allowed for the last question. I'll begin by introducing the candidates. They are each seeking election to a seat that's important to the cities of Murfreesboro, and we hope to hear them address the substantive issues facing all of us. I want to thank them for their gracious acceptance of our invitation to participate in this event. Sitting to my far right and speaking first tonight is Mr. Danny Brandon, followed by Mr. Chris Bratcher, Mr. Toby Gilly, Mr. Bill Jakes, Mr. Connor Moss, Mr. Eddie Smotherman, Mr. Ricky Turner, and Mr. Ron Washington. Mr. Brandon, you may begin with your opening statement.
Thank you. My name is Danny Brandon. I'm a graduate of MTSU with a degree in accounting. I've been married to my high school sweetheart, Rita, for 25 years, and I've lived in Murfreesboro for the past 10 years. When you go to the polls on April 17th, I'd like for you to consider these three points. One, the election date. As a city, $60,000 of your money is being wasted by not coordinating this election with the national election. Two, term limits. The combined tenure of these three councilmen is 50 years. Queen Elizabeth has only reigned for 60 years, and she's the Queen of England. This isn't supposed to be a kingdom. Three, the debt. Our city has almost $400 million in debt. In 2004, just two election cycles ago, we had less than $200 million in debt. With history as our guide and the incumbents as our leaders, they will rack up another $100 million in debt unless you say no. I'm asking you to join me in saying no. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bratcher?
Good evening. To those here tonight, and to those at home watching this forum on City Channel 3, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and for allowing you to get to know the candidates better. I am Chris Bratcher, the Vice Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro. It has been an honor to serve you on the Murfreesboro City Council. I was born and raised here in Murfreesboro. I attended McFadden Elementary School, Central Middle School, Riverdale High School, and MTSU. I have three children, Candy, Misty, and Chris III. I have two grandchildren. Chase is a sophomore at Segal High School, and Haley is at the Segal Middle School. I have been a small businessperson in the city of Murfreesboro for most of my life, and presently, I am a commercial real estate broker with Red Realty here in Murfreesboro. Why am I serving, and why do I want to serve? Because I love Murfreesboro, this great city, and I want to contribute and give something back to the city that I was born and raised in. The people of Murfreesboro are special, and we are blessed to live in this great city. So I'd appreciate your vote for Chris Bratcher.
Thank you. Mr. Gilly?
Thank you, and thank you to the League for hosting this forum tonight. I am Toby Gilly, and my wife Laurie and I have two small children who attend the Discovery School as part of the Murfreesboro City School System. By trade, I'm an attorney, representing primarily insurance companies such as State Farm and Nissan. My wife and I and our family attend the North Boulevard Church of Christ. I am also certified by our State Supreme Court as a Rule 31 mediator, and for the last five years, I have been teaching as an adjunct professor at MTSU. During the 12 years that I've had the opportunity and privilege to serve you on the Murfreesboro City Council, I have been the council's representative on the Planning Commission, the Water and Sewer Board, chairing the Risk Management Commission, and have also served as the council representative on the Cable and Library Boards. I believe that we have the greatest city in the world in which we live, and I hope to help continue to make it that way. I'm asking for your vote, April 17th.
Thank you. Mr. Jakes?
Hi, my name is Bill Jakes. I'm a local Murfreesboro resident. I have many generations of family from here. I live in the downtown community on Manny Avenue. Went to school here, various different schools, McFadden and Kitchell, graduated from Oakland. I'm married to my wife Sarah. We have a one-and-a-half-year-old boy. And I'm running for city council because I really just want to give back to the community. I want to serve this community I care about so much. I really believe we're headed in a great direction, and I want to continue that path. And I am making myself available for this position to just be an alternative for the voters that are out there. I'd like to say thanks to everyone who's shown up and cares enough about this election to participate, and for everyone out there watching tonight, I really appreciate you considering me as one of your choices for city council.
Thank you. Mr. Moss?
I'm Connor Moss, recent graduate of MTSU. I work at Oakland's Historic House Museum, and I've been there for almost five years. I also work downtown at Maple Street Grill and live in the downtown area. I'd appreciate your vote for me, April 17th. And there's three things. And there's three things that I'd like you to remember when you go to the ballot box, that we need districts here, and also, we've got to have term limits, and also, if we don't move our election date, we won't have high voter turnout in the future. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having us tonight and look forward to the responses to the debate.
Thank you. Mr. Smotherman?
Hello, I'm Eddie Smotherman. I was born in Murfreesboro. I've been married 20 years, and I have two sons. I acquired my formal education at Mitchell Nelson Central Middle, Oakland High School, and MTSU. My employment history starts out as a paperboy for the Daily News Journal. My first full-time job was as a tire builder at Firestone. I later worked at Nissan for 18 and a half years as an analyst. In August of 2000, I opened up a small family-owned business. As a business owner, I understand the challenges faced by businesses in an ever-changing business environment. As a candidate, I'm endorsed by the Small Business Association, or Alliance, of Rutherford County. As a public servant, I've always understood the importance of being a volunteer. I've served as a youth sports coach in Murfreesboro for 38 years. I've been a Murfreesboro JC, an MDA Chairman for the state, and a Volunteer of the Year recipient. And now, I'm ready to serve as your new unbiased, fair city councilman with absolutely no conflicts of interest.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
My name is Ricky R. Turner, a native of Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Married, and I have two children. I'm presently the co-owner of the Cedar Bucket Cafeteria here in the City of Murfreesboro. I serve on the Parks and Rec Commission Board here in the city. I'm a Navy, Navy veteran. My campaign theme for this year is Ricky Turner, the right choice for city council. And what makes me the right choice for city council is that I truly, too, believe in district representation or a hybrid system, also a balanced budget, also more public involvement from the citizens of Murfreesboro on the decisions that's made, and also, no partiality between big and small business.
Thank you. Mr. Washington?
Thank you, League of Women Voters. My name is Ron Washington. I've been on the council since 1998. I think that experience matters, and we have shown it. I think I've served, and my councilman will tell you, that I've served on just about every commission that the city council represents. I'm the city liaison to the school board at this particular time, and I have a vested interest in this community. We've been involved in a number of community projects, you know what they are, the Patterson Center, working on, always working on in the community, and the volunteerism is not just serving on a local level, but we have served and still serving on the state, local, and national level. And, and our experience matters, and I ask for your vote on the 17th of April.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now turn to our first question. The question will be answered by Mr. Bratcher first. Mr. Bratcher, what opportunities are there, or should there be, for the city council to promote or support environmental improvements?
Well, you know, I think that Murfreesboro should always support environmental improvement such as recycling. We have, back a few years ago, Murfreesboro tried a recycling pilot program, and we found that at, at that time, it just wasn't feasible. But we have several different private businesses here in Murfreesboro that do recycling, and it's a very cost-effective way to do it. Here at City Hall, we have just installed environmentally, we replaced all of our lights and things with environmental bulbs, and, and that's been very cost-effective for the City of Murfreesboro as well.
Thank you. Mr. Gilli?
The three things that I would point to regarding this issue are, first, the extensive greenway system that we have throughout the, the city that encourages use of, of green space and activity and recreational benefits to all of the, the citizens of Murfreesboro. Second, I think, as you're starting to see in the avenues and some other businesses, the charging stations for the electric and hybrid model cars is something we need to encourage developers to put in, and then also, to continue to encourage the private recycling industry throughout the city.
Thank you. Mr. Jakes?
I believe the city has taken a fairly good path in pursuing these sort of things in the past, and with such things as wastewater, you know, and the, and the pavers that are being utilized along Manny Avenue. And I believe, as far as future things go, we should really only pursue those as a city if it's profitable for the city. Otherwise, private entities can, can take on these things like recycling and the curbside.
Thank you. Mr. Moss?
One of the things that I've been harping on a lot lately is the rapid growth of the City of Murfreesboro, and the limits of the city have the potential to help us, but at the same time, our growth, if gone unchecked, can lead to environmental degradation such as runoff in our, in our water as well. So, I'd like to see us think hard about the way we develop and the way that we move forward in being, in being a prosperous city here. Also, like Mr. Jake said, we've got to make sure that the ways that we do things are profitable for us, and private industry has been very good at the recycling business here, as well as the convenience centers.
Thank you. Mr. Smotherman?
Yes, approximately two weeks ago, I met with a two-time press, past president of Recycle Rutherford and had a conversation about recycling. Certainly, recycling is something that we need to encourage in Murfreesboro. Curbside recycling will not work because it forces people to do something against their will in many cases. For those who do want to support recycling, certainly, having some program would be better than no program, and currently, we, the city is doing very little to incorporate the private sector into a program that would work.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
I truly believe that you need some type of regulations, both from the private sector as well as the business section concerning clean water, clean air, and also, some type of recycling, the precious resources that we have. If we're not careful, we can get ourselves in trouble by harming the environment and using all these natural resources. So, it's good to reuse the things that we have before we run out of them.
Thank you. Mr. Washington?
In these economic times, I am for any kind of greenway or green space, the promotion the city can do, but whatever we do needs to be cost-effective or it becomes another tax, a taxpayer subsidized service. So, we have to watch that and want our costs, especially in these days and times. But overall, anything we can do to be more green and, and more energy efficient as a utility person, I'm all for.
Okay. Our next question, we'll start with Mr. -- oh, I'm so sorry. Sorry, Mr. Brandon.
All right. As far as the environmental issues, I, I think we certainly, we always have to look at that. One of the things that I think we always need to do as a city, though, is unleash business. And what I mean by that is, let's make sure that our codes enforcement is working with business, not against them, so that private enterprise looks for those avenues to develop businesses that are profitable for them and are good for the environment. And I know they're out there. We just have to make sure that codes works with our companies and not against them.
Okay. Now, our next question, we'll start with Mr. Gilli. If elected or re-elected, what would you like to see accomplished during your term in office?
Over the next four years, we have a number of things that I think we'll be seeing coming up with the city and our capital improvement project plans. Two major things that have to, to occur, I believe, is the training facility, which our firefighters have been asking for, and I believe we will see in next month's capital improvement plan, as well as an overhaul of the communications system and equipment for our police and fire department.
Great. Mr. Jakes?
I would have to agree with Mr. Gilli on that. I've recently spoke with firefighters and police, and those are the two main things that, that came right to the top that are important to our first responders in Murfreesboro. And as well, I was, if elected, I would really just like to reach out to the community and make sure that I serve the voice of the people in this position, no matter what the question. I would always want to defer to the will of the people.
Thank you. Mr. Moss?
And going back to the things that I said in my opening statement, term limits are one of those things that we have just got to have, as well as the district representation, a hybrid representation. And, and like the previous two said, the firefighters are in desperate need of a new communication system, which has the ability to save lives as it goes. So, that's one of the things that I would really like to see. And again, more people, more citizen involvement is, is another thing. I want people to be able to speak at city council meetings if they want to speak, and I want people to feel like they're engaged in the city government and be able to make decisions with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smotherman?
There's so many things I would like to address. The rising debt, the water supply, gang issues, sewage treatments, the airport improvements, the aging school buildings. We have so many things that have to be addressed immediately because of lack of attention in the past. If I'm elected, we will get that change made, and we'll get it made immediately.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
I also agree with these candidates so far. First thing that I'd want to do is move this April 17th election. First of all, it coincides with the most important day, tax, the last day to get your tax in. We just had Super Tuesday. We got another election in August, and then we have one in November, so it's really too many elections for such a low turnout. Also, we, we talk about growth and growing the city, but we're spending more money and taking in less money. Our deficit is just too big as a fourth generation of, of Murfreesboro.
Thank you. Mr. Washington?
Yes, ma'am. The training facility is very important. Our school system is looking at $24 million investment. The communication system, something has to be done really county-wide, not just for the city, and I hope that we are working with the county to do something about that. Police facilities enhancement, and I'm always looking for economic, economic development in the whole of parts of town. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brandon?
Okay, the first thing I would like to see us do is address the debt, because it worries me. I hate to see my kids be saddled with debt that they didn't accumulate. Second thing, the communication system for police and fire, I know is necessary, because it's one of those things that endangers our police and firefighters. And then the third issue is, I'd like to see our city council meetings have a more open forum so that citizens can make comments at will.
Thank you. Mr. Bratcher?
Great. I'd like to see us develop our new park on the west side of Murfreesboro, training facility for our fire department, and new communication system for our police and fire. I'd like to see us to have new police precincts spread out across the City of Murfreesboro, and also, do not support the expansion of the airport. And one of my number one goals is to create jobs for our citizens and for our kids and our grandkids, so you can live and stay here in Murfreesboro and work. So, jobs is a top priority.
Thank you. Our third question, we'll start with Mr. Jakes, and that is, with the population growing rapidly, do you think the at-large representation of the current council should remain? Why or why not?
I personally do believe in the at-large system, because I, I really feel that with district representation, you get such things as vote trading. You, you basically have one person standing up for you in your side of town, and, you know, even though I feel that way, I really believe there should be a public discussion about this matter. The, the city really seems to be pushing this idea, the citizens do, and instead of me just, you know, going with what I feel personally, I believe a discussion needs to be brought to the table.
Thank you. Mr. Moss?
And I've often advocated for the, a district system. Murfreesboro is the only city in Tennessee with a population over 100,000 that does not have district representation. It's, it's time to have district representation, and I advocate for a hybrid system, as you heard me mention a moment ago, where you may have several at-large members as well as some district members. It's, it's very important, especially in such a large city. I, I feel like it's, it's time to have that, have representation.
Thank you. Mr. Smotherman?
Well, the study on this has already been done. The city charter has already been changed. All it has to be is voted on. I would agree that a hybrid system would be the better system to go with. I do not agree with increasing the number of council members because it would be more expense, but if we went with a four and two hybrid system with four district representatives and two at-large, then we would be able to hold someone accountable for each area of Murfreesboro, and I think that would be a better system, and I would like to support that and go with it.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
I truly, too, believe in a, some type of district representation. As a young boy growing up in Murfreesboro, I pretty much knew all the cities, all the streets, all the neighborhoods, but since Murfreesboro has grown so rapidly over the last few years, there's a lot of areas that I have no clue where they are, or I have no family, I have no business ties there, so there's a lot of unknown territory even to a local boy who's been here all his life. So, citizens need some type of representation, because I feel like if you've got three or four congress, councilmen living all in the same area, somebody may get unnoticed.
Thank you. Mr. Washington?
Well, I feel like we, as a council, especially myself, is already accountable to all of the citizens of, of Murfreesboro, the city of Murfreesboro, travel all over this city. Wherever the call comes, that's where we go. And, and what I would like for the citizens to make the decisions, the whether we change our form of government or not, and not the council members themselves. But I like the system the way it is, but I'm open to something else if the citizens want us to go that way.
Thank you. Mr. Brandon?
Okay. I agree with what it sounds like most of the folks here think, a hybrid system, because for one, from the things I've read, it seems that a, a full district representation is typically a little more expensive to operate than an at-large city council. On the other hand, I, I would hate to see all six members of the council live on the same street, and everybody on the other side of town feel like they had not a single vote or voice in, in anything that was happening to them locally.
Thank you. Mr. Bratcher?
Well, you know, I've, we've talked about districts for many years, and I've never had a call from anyone who said that they thought our form of government is necessarily broken. Everyone I talk to likes to say that they can call all the members on the city council instead of having just one. If you've ever done any business in Nashville, you'll know that it's probably not a very efficient form of government. But anyway, I would like to see it put on the ballot and let the, the public decide what form of government they would like to have. And, and our county has district representation, and, and most people, I don't think even know who their district representative, representative is in the county at this point. So, it's not the, the form of government, it's the quality of individual that you elect.
Thank you. Mr. Gilli?
Thank you. As has already been outlined by the other candidates here tonight, there are certainly pros and cons of both the at-large and the district representation models of, of government. Having said that, as many times over the last few years, as this question has been raised and discussed, what I would like to propose, if re-elected, is that the next county-wide election ballot, there be a city-only question placed on that ballot in referendum form that will, would have three parts for the citizens to answer. One, district representation or a hybrid system, and whether the council should be increased to accommodate whichever of those two systems is chosen by the public.
Thank you. Question number four, we'll begin with you, Mr. Moss, and that question is, what do you feel is the main responsibility of a council member?
And that's an interesting question, because the, the council member has a multitude of responsibilities, but one is just being, you know, being able to answer the questions of your residents of the city, whatever those questions may be, and they range the gamut. And so, we've got to be able to balance a budget, we've got to be able to pave the roads, and, and just a wide variety of things. So, I would, I would be hesitant to narrow it down to just, you know, two or three things, but especially balance a budget, I think that's a big, a big part of that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Smotherman?
I think a city councilman should be Lord to no one and servant to everyone. I think that he should be the voice for the city employees, he should be the voice for the public, and when he sits on the council, he should be ready to make tough decisions. Just a moment ago, one of your council members said, "If I'm re-elected, I'll do something." You don't have to wait till you're re-elected. If you're on the council, you can do it Thursday night.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
That, that truly is a wide, a wide question, but I think the, the city councilman responsibility is first of all to the citizens of this city that it lives in, making the right decision, getting input. It's not for his or her best interest, but for the citizens. And sometime when you make the, when you stand for truth or when you stand for what's right, you're not going to please everybody, but at night, when you lay down your head to, to rest, you, you have to know that you've done the right thing. You can't make everybody happy, you can't make every district happy, but you got to do the right thing.
Thank you. Mr. Washington?
I think that we've proven that over our last 14 years of service, that when the citizens call, at least I respond, or refer them to the appropriate department and try to track them and see what, what went on. That's what we do, that's what I do. I have a commitment to serve from day one, that's what I do as a, as a district manager for Milton &amp; Tunsford Electric, managing the electric company, and serving the public for over 30 years, whether it be on the council or whether it be at Milton &amp; Tunsford Electric. That's just in my heart and soul to serve people, and that's what we do best.
Thank you. Mr. Brandon?
Okay. We live in a representative republic, so I think the, the council member's main responsibility is to represent the citizens of this city. One of the things that may, need to make sure is that the government is protecting its citizens, and that's both fiscally and, and physically. So, that's, that would be my main responsibility.
Thank you. Mr. Bratcher?
Our number one priority here in Murfreesboro is safe and livable neighborhoods. I think you have to have low crime. I think you have to create an atmosphere where our small businesses can perform and they can be very profitable. I think you have to have great parks and great recreations and have great places where we can create jobs, where we can all thrive, and our kids can thrive here in Murfreesboro. So, that's, that's been our top priority, is safe and livable neighborhoods.
Thank you. Mr. Gilli?
Thank you. I think in one word to sum up, the main responsibility of any member of this council is to listen, to listen to the citizens of this community, listen to the employees of this city, and then after you've done that listening, to do what's right for the city as a whole, which includes overseeing the five charter officers that run the city on a day-to-day basis, and using your tax dollars as wisely as possible while thinking outside
thinking outside the box to provide the best services possible.
Thank you. Mr. Jakes?
I believe the responsibilities of a council member are mainly to be active in the community, to be, you know, visible to all of its citizens, and to listen, and to represent the will of those people, whether it be road projects, infrastructure, schools, police, all of those things that we're going to be involved in. The bottom line is to, you know, vote the will of the people. I think it's as simple as that.
Thank you. We'll begin question number five with you, Mr. Smotherman. What are the biggest challenges facing the city of Murfreesboro?
I'm sorry, would you repeat the question?
That's fine, yeah. What are the biggest challenges facing the city of Murfreesboro?
I think the biggest question facing the city of Murfreesboro right now is stimulating the economy. Somehow, we have to create jobs. And as a business owner, I know how to create jobs. I know how to get people back to work, but also understand the importance of doing it fairly so that large businesses and small businesses are treated equally. I also would love to see home sales stimulated, and I do have a plan for that. If you'd go to eddysmotherman.com, I'll present that for you.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
I truly believe that growth, as the cities continue to grow, and how are we going to pay for this growth? Also crime, also bringing more industry and jobs to this area. I think truly Murfreesboro is a great place to live and work for and work in. But I think also it should be an even playing field. We shouldn't bribe companies or offer them incentives on coming and working and relocating in this city, but they should want to come to Murfreesboro because they love the location and its people.
Thank you. Mr. Washington?
I think one of the biggest challenges facing the next city council and beyond is meeting the fiscal challenges that we seem to be looking at, like the training facility. They don't come free. Training facility, the investment in our school system, the road projects like Braderville Pike, Milton City Boulevard. There's a lot of projects on our table for the next five years that meeting those challenges will be a real chore, but I believe we'll meet them.
Thank you. Mr. Brandon?
Okay. In the short term, the biggest challenge facing Murfreesboro is simple, jobs. We have to make sure that we have jobs. Problem is, we've got to make sure that private enterprise, not government, create those jobs. And I think government can do things to encourage jobs, but we just need to make sure they're encouraging, not building, because we do not need to grow government, we need to shrink it if possible.
Thank you. Mr. Bradshaw?
I think the top priority is jobs. Over the last 24 months, just in Murfreesboro alone, we have created 1,800 good-paying jobs just in the city of Murfreesboro. Murfreesboro ranks 14th in the nation as the fastest job growth area in our country. So I want to say that that's probably the top priority at this point. And I also want to say that Money Magazine also ranked Murfreesboro as a 20th place, 20th best place in Murfreesboro for affordable house and best places to live. So we've created a good atmosphere, we just need to keep it going.
Thank you. Mr. Gilli?
Some of the biggest challenges we have over the next few years that will be upcoming include providing new schools, new roads, the training facility that we've talked about tonight, and providing to make sure that we have the best benefit package we can offer for our employees, to make sure that we have the best employees to serve the citizens of this city, while at the same time using the tax dollars as wisely as we can to provide those services.
Thank you. Mr. Jakes?
I believe the greatest challenge we're going to face is the continued growth of Murfreesboro. There's really, it's not slowed in a number of years, and it's not going as slow, just based on our geographic location and all the things we have to offer in this area. So the continued growth, schools, the roads, the first responders, and paying for those things. And I would like to add that, you know, we wouldn't have had this growth without taking on this debt that we have. We have to invest in road projects like the avenue to increase the tax base so that we can continue to grow in a smart direction.
Thank you. Mr. Moss?
And it really always, the challenges that we face do, again, come right from our growth, which isn't a great thing, but if we don't do it appropriately, we're going to pay the consequences in the long run. Our crime is going up when you bring more people in. Our infrastructure must be maintained. We've got to learn to maintain what we've got in our city budget now and our city limits as well, so we don't fall behind on those as well. Schools and roads, and again, those fall into infrastructure, but those are two of the things that we really must focus on if we want to maintain those for the future.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, our next question will start with you, and that question is, how do you plan to stay in touch with the concerns and ideas of your constituents?
Again, you have to be more accessible. You have to be more availability. I have advantage because I own my own business. I don't have to be there 24/7. I'm pretty much about the town. I go to different events. I visit people. I'm all about the town and its citizens, whether it's some event that I'm having, or somebody else having, or school system. I just love Murfreesboro. I love the people of Murfreesboro. And, you know, cell phone and technology, you can always be accessible in today's time.
Thank you. Mr. Washington?
Yes, I agree, Rick. With email and technology, and I have a little bit of the advantage also being the district manager at Milton Tennessee Electric and being both in the county and the city, I hear it from both sides. So one thing I do appreciate is the relationship that we have with our county commissioners and county government as a city council. But we're always accessible. If you want to get to us, you can.
Thank you. Mr. Brandon?
Okay. I think this is where city council meetings and the public comments come in. I think that we need to have public comments. We need to have people feel like that this is their city hall. It is. And they need to come in and voice their opinions, be it before the meeting, after the meeting. And obviously, I'm not suggesting that people disrupt the meeting, but have a voice to come in and talk to people before these meetings and let their concerns be heard.
Thank you. Mr. Bradshaw?
I think being accessible is one of the great things that makes Murfreesboro great. Murfreesboro just recently opened up its own Facebook page where you can communicate with our city and our staff. Obviously, we have our City Channel 3 here that broadcasts all of our meetings. We also have them streamed live on the internet. We all have mobile phones. My mobile phone is published on the city's website. I have my phone and name on several real estate signs throughout the city of Murfreesboro. So it's very easy to get accessible to us if you really want to.
Thank you. Mr. Gilli?
Three simple answers to that. One, always try to answer phone calls and respond and return messages, respond to emails. And if someone wants to meet with you face-to-face, always make yourself available in that regard. During my first or second year on the council, I proposed, and we did this for a while, and that was actually taking the council on the road, so to speak. Once every couple of months, we would take the council and have the meeting at a school at a different location and allow the public to come to bring the council to the public instead of the public having to come here. We had very low participation, unfortunately, from the public, but I would certainly be willing to try that again.
Thank you. Mr. Jakes?
Well, I always make myself available through telephone and email. These days, social media is king, and that's something I'm very familiar with and I would utilize if elected to the council. I've recently been involved with some neighborhood conversations, such as the Demos family building an office on Manny Avenue, and managed to get over 300 people involved in the conversation on a Facebook page called Downtown Dwellers. So by the time there was a public meeting, we were all on the same page. So I would continue in that direction with the technology that's available.
Thank you. Mr. Moss?
We live in a modern age where, again, we can contact each other at a moment's notice, and I think it's, and myself being quite a social person in general, I have no problem meeting face-to-face with residents, which I've been doing quite often since I moved here and especially on the campaign trail. And so a lot of, you know, my phone number is published on my Facebook as well. And so I'm happy to talk with anybody, just about anything. And I think that's a responsibility of a city councilman, is to talk to anybody about anything, anytime they want to, day or night. So I think continuing down that path would be easy.
Thank you. Mr. Smotherman?
I'm a local business owner. You're welcome to walk in my door any day and visit with me and talk with me and discuss the issues going on in the city. You're welcome to talk to me on Facebook. I check it daily. If we could improve the communication of being able to communicate to the council, I think that would be a good thing, though. And by that, I mean, we need to come up with some formula, whether it be 10, three-minute segments or something, that we could have people sign up and come and speak to the council. You would have to go through the city manager to get your name on the list, but that would be a way you could speak, and we currently do not have that.
Thank you. For our last question, we'll begin with Mr. Washington. And as a reminder, everyone has one minute to answer this question. Mr. Washington, what's your vision for Murfreesboro, and how can you help to achieve that vision?
Well, I've already kind of answered that. My vision for Murfreesboro is continue to grow Murfreesboro, continue to work on the public safety issues that Murfreesboro will be challenged with, the school infrastructure issues. I'm every day. You know, I experience matters, and we hit the foot running, and people know that I'm hands-on, always have been, have been very accessible. And that's why we've been doing the things we do, especially in the older areas of town where they need access to some services that have already left. And that's happened. Most of our business and most of what we do is behind the scenes. It's behind the scenes, working on projects, working on things the public tells us about and addressing those in an appropriate manner. So we would love to continue to serve, and I'm asking for your vote on April 17, early voting, I think it's the 29th of March through April the 12. I'm looking forward to the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brandon?
Okay. As I said, I'm not a lifelong resident. I moved here because we chose Murfreesboro. It didn't choose us by birth. We love this city, and we plan on staying. So my vision for the city is that we'll continue to be the great city that we saw when we came here. As far as my final message, it would be that, as I previously stated, my name is Danny Brandon, and I'm asking for your vote. But before I do that, I want to make it easy for you to decide. If you think our government's job is to protect you both physically and financially, then you should vote for me. If you think a government free from conflicts of interest is essential, then you should vote for me. And finally, if you think it's wrong to rack up nearly $400 million in debt and then expect our children and grandchildren to pay the bill, then you should vote for me. Again, my name is Danny Brandon, and I'm asking for your vote.
Thank you. Mr. Bradshaw?
Thank you. If you vote for Chris Bradshaw, we can continue to make this great city even better. I promise safe neighborhoods, and I promise low crime. I promise great school systems for our children. I promise you the best recreation facilities, like our new sports con pool, Patterson Center, Siegel Soccer Complex, our Greenway System, Barfield Park, and our new tennis courts at O'Fort Parkway, and soon to have a new Kids Castle at O'Fort Parkway. And we're soon in the process of looking for a new park on the west side of Murfreesboro. I promise you no tax increases. Since 2000, Murfreesboro's population has increased 58 percent, yet we haven't raised taxes in 13 straight years during all that. I promise you jobs. Like I said, over the last 24 months, we've created 1,800 good-paying jobs just here in the city of Murfreesboro. I am Chris Bradshaw, the Vice Mayor of Murfreesboro, and I'm asking you for your vote and support on April 17.
Thank you. Mr. Gilli?
Thank you. In response to this question, I would like to say that it's been a pleasure and a privilege to serve the citizens of this community for the last 12 years. I would hope that in the coming years, we can continue to have a tax rate as we've had in the last 13 years without any increase. It actually has gone down 26 percent during the last 12 years. A budget, as our audit has just shown from a couple of weeks ago from our audit, that came in a grand total of $4.5 million under forecasted budget, and sales tax revenues currently year-to-date, fiscal year-to-date, that are up $1,006,006. A city that moves forward in the most positive possible way, keeping it the greatest city in the world in which to live.
Thank you. Mr. Jakes?
Well, my vision for Murfreesboro and the growth that we're going to continue to experience is, I hope to see us move in a direction of somewhat a metropolitan feel. I believe as we continue to grow, the communities move away from the heart of town. We need to focus on police precincts in the outskirts, such as Barfield, or on the west side of town, Casey Lane. These areas are becoming very dense, and they have their own identity. And I believe they're going to continue to grow in that direction. So the city's going to have to branch out. At the same time, we're going to have to really watch debt as we do this growth. Debt for the city is common. It's always been in the plan, as long as we're paying it off. And currently, the city is paying their debt off quicker than it needs to be. These debts are based on 10- and 15-year payback schedules instead of 30 or more. They get a preferred interest rate because of that. I think as long as we can move in that same direction, we're going to be in great shape.
Thank you. Mr. Moss?
My vision for Murfreesboro over the next, you know, 20, 30, 100 years is for a safe place, a safe and affordable place to raise a family. Again, I chose Murfreesboro. I chose to go to school here, and I'm choosing to stay here and raise my family here one day as well. So I would hope to see Murfreesboro continue to grow, but I would like us to see it grow responsibly with our fiscal responsibilities and our boundaries as well. Again, our infrastructure is something that's got to be maintained, and if we don't do it now, we'll end up doing it later and not in a pleasant way. So I see Murfreesboro as a great place, and it can continue to be a great place as long as we keep up with it as we go. I would appreciate your vote on April 17. Connor Moss for City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smotherman?
There are three important things you should do on April 17. You should make sure you've paid your federal income tax. You should plant your homegrown tomatoes, and you should go to the polls and try and elect a fair, unbiased city councilman with absolutely no conflicts of interest. Let's elect a councilman who understands that he's lord to no one and servant to everyone. I believe our city must supply quality services without waste, and we need district representation. If elected, I assure you, I'll vote for looking at the big picture, and the question would be, is it good for Murfreesboro, and is this the right time? Please vote for me, Eddie Smotherman, April 17. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
As I think about the growth of Murfreesboro, it's kind of hard to imagine a city that I grew up in, maybe had a population at one time of 20,000, now it's close to 100-some thousand. As we continue to grow, we must be prepared for this growth, but we also must look at the cost of growth. And whatever caused us to grow, whether it be new industry, new business, they must also help pay for this growth. It shouldn't be up to the citizens alone to pay for this growth, but also business that comes in and pay for this growth. I truly believe that the growth of Murfreesboro is vital to its citizens, for its school system, for its infrastructure, but also during this growth, we also must look at the other side, the less fortunate. Last year, it said over 983 people were homeless at one time. So this affects us all as well. So we all got to consent on both sides of the picture.
Thank you. Once again, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, Murfreesboro Cable Commission, and City TV Department, I want to thank all of the candidates for their participation tonight. I want to recognize the staff of Governmental Channel 3 for their cooperation in presenting this program. And I also want to remind all of the citizens to go to the polls either during early voting, March 28 to April 12, or on Election Day, April 17, to exercise this important right to determine who represents you. May we close with a round of applause for the candidates.